All right, guys. We're back from our quick break and we're going to ask a few more questions. And we're going to start with the Walsh Act. This is something that I was told personally from a source that will remain nameless about a year ago. One of the quotes I've heard recently about it is that you have five mini-mayors who control each of their own little departments. And sometimes that leads to a lot of miscommunication and problems that might be better solved by what a lot of people think is a more traditional form of government where the mayor has more of an executive role. So I would like each of the candidates to give their take on the current form of government with the Walsh Act and whether they would change it from the Walsh Act to maybe the Faulkner Act. And how would you go about doing that? Mr. Sui.
Well, I believe this, that any form of government is only as good as the people in it. That's the first thing. So does the Walsh Act have its strengths and weaknesses? Of course it does. And you're right. Every commissioner is the chief executive of his department. Now, when the commissioners are working together and they run stuff through the administrator and the administrator, when it functions right, it functions great. A while back, and I can remember, it was a long time ago, we took our nonpartisan election that was held in May and we moved it to November. That was a huge mistake. Our elections aren't nonpartisan. You know, you can see that. You can see that through the fundraising. You can see that through who goes to what fundraisers, in both sides, and then me included. I'm not going to cut any bones about it. So would the mayor council form of government be better? In many cases, it would. If you have a council that's cooperating with the mayor, if you don't, then you have another problem. You saw it at the county level when, sometimes when, you know, it's split, Republican and Democrat. Same problems. So again, it's more about the people than the form of government. There was an attempt to change it in, I don't know, 2014 or 15, when I was in office before. We put it up to the voters. The voters said no. So they wanted to keep this form of government. What they would want to do now? I have no idea. I wouldn't be opposed to a change or to keeping it because, again, it's the people you elect. So I know Mr. Drell has a team of three. I'm kind of running with two other guys. So it's going to be interesting. We have three. I don't know why we don't have five apiece, right? And we only have three apiece. So there's always that danger. Because it takes four people to pass a bond. You need a super majority for certain things, to fire the business administrator, you need four. To pass bonds, you need four. So sometimes you're forced to work together, you know, and that's just it. It really comes down to the people that you elect. Who do you want to elect? Who do you want there? Is one form of government better than the other? All depends on the circumstances. So, and if the people want to change it, I'm all for putting it up for a vote again. It's okay with me. But it's going to become even more partisan when you do that.
McGinty.
Well, yes, me a question I don't know a whole lot about. I know the commission is like a panel. You got five different people up there with five different ideas, five different diverse backgrounds. That can be a huge advantage. It can be a disadvantage if they don't work together. You can have five people run it through a weak mayor and then nothing happens. You know, you need people that are go-getters. And the beauty of this is people can pick and choose, you know, who they want. I have a certain expertise that I want to work with. You know, I think there's a spot on the commission for me. I might not be the guy who's going to cook the book, not cook the books. Wrong words. That's going to crank through the books and look for mistakes like Joe Sui does. I mean, you know, it's funny, I said that, but he's, he's found mistakes, he's done double checks, he's a mathematician. I'm not that guy. He knows where to look for money, grants and so forth and so on. I'm not that guy. I'm a scientist. I hate balancing my checkbook, is what it is. Everybody has something to offer. Would one mayor be better? I don't know. Then he has to hire people to be in charge of the different departments. One guy can't do it. So that's my perception of it. Is there much of a difference? I don't think so. Equal power? Sometimes you don't get things done because people don't agree. It's kind of like the president having a cabinet, having different people in charge of different jobs that are diverse. You know, you can get the right people to do the job. But you have to elect the right people. And, you know, that's, you know, how I see it. Thanks.
Mr. Darella.
You are correct. City of Millville with the Walsh Act is very unique throughout the state of New Jersey. I think the last time I looked at, there's maybe seven or 10 of the municipalities out of over 600 that still have and cling to this former government with commissioners. And I will tell you this, doesn't matter what form of government you're in, attitude reflects leadership. Whoever sits in the main seat in the Walsh Act, whoever sits in the Faulkner Act as a mayor, their attitude and how they communicate, how they work, how they set expectations, and how they make sure that they allow the administration, people that are being paid, to do their jobs, that's how it's going to go. I've been fortunate. Pretty much every place I've been, there have been four or six other reasonable people that would listen and really dedicate themselves to try to understand each one's point of view. Comes down to communication. That is huge. And any business is successful, you've got a trickle-down effect on what you're going to do. I've already told you that our plan would be to meet weekly with all the department heads and one other individual they want to bring. That's how it should be. Okay? But again, pros and cons to both. Mr. Sui did say that. Where does the community want to go? I think the community really needs to be educated in regards to how each one of these forms of government work. Not a Facebook guy. I'll thumb through and give somebody a thumbs up or a happy birthday, but I don't dabble in that kind of stuff because I just think all it does is create keyboard warriors and people go back and forth and you can say whatever you want, just not into that stuff. It's just not the way to go. But somehow we need to educate the residents so that if it does get to be a referendum, they understand what they're going for and what, how each one of these governments work. Again, pitfalls for both. I've been very lucky. The people I've had a chance to work with, even at the county level, Democrats and Republican, and believe me, very, very partisan at that level, but be able to work with those Republicans, even if you did not need their vote to get past something, you still need to make sure they're informed, you still can't block them out, you still have to give them an opportunity to put input. So again, if you check the record that I've had at that level, there was always a Republican on the Finance Committee, whether it was a six-to-one board, five-to-two board, or four-to-three. There was always somebody from the opposite side on those committees that were very important to make sure they were heard. Didn't always agree, but at least they knew they had a listening and they had an ear that they could go to. And that goes back to what I said at the very beginning, attitude reflects leadership. How you set the tone, whether you're a mayor in a form of government or you're a strong mayor in the Faulkner Act, you need to make sure that you have that tone and you communicate and you really set those expectations. That's going to be key. Setting expectations so that whether it's the other four commissioners or it's a form of council, you have to make sure that they see your vision and you incorporate theirs as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. And this will be somewhat redundant based on some responses earlier today, but one of the big themes in the public is getting the commission to work together. I know people have mentioned it, so just to directly ask, some people may have been lucky with prior commissions and boards in other areas, but how will you ensure that the commission, no matter who gets elected, will work together and be productive? Mr. Sui.
So you can see that our commission doesn't always work together. And that's because we have people up there with diametrically opposed viewpoints. We have one commissioner that stated he's against development. So, you know, that creates a, that creates a problem. You do the best you can to try to work together. And sometimes when you can't work together because you have diametrically opposed views, then you have to start making arguments. And sometimes people's feelings get hurt. Some people say, well, you should have all those discussions behind closed doors. Well, I'd love to be able to get five commissioners behind closed doors and talk to them all at the same time. The sunshine law prohibits that. Right? We could work a lot of these problems out behind closed doors, but unfortunately, we can't. We have some commissioners that want to block ideas just because they're somebody else's ideas. That's nonsense. It truly is nonsense. And again, you know, I hope when you vote, what's very important is when you vote, you're listening to three of us, you had an opportunity to hear the mayor, you'll have, you have the opportunity to see on things we agree with and things we disagree with. Mr. Drell's been very fortunate. Right? He's had people that are reasonable. Now, mostly, right? Yeah, mostly. See, there you go, mostly. So in addition to that, you didn't have to deal with social media as much as we have to deal with social media now. So, and Mr. McGinty, whatever you put on social media, somebody's passing you. I looked at one of my critics and I just happened to say, let me scroll through her page. So her page says, you're not going to win an argument here with me because I'm just here to make you mad. So if that's your goal, you're not interested in your community, but you will wreak havoc on your city. And that's what happens. So, you know, I hope, and you know, I see I have a lot in common with Mr. Drell. We truly do on our goals. We really do. So I don't know if we're going to agree on all our methods, but I'm sure if I were elected with him together, that we would be able to work together. Same with Mr. McGinty. Some of the others, not so much. So, you know, you have other candidates, another candidate has said she's against development. Well, I'm sorry, if you don't have jobs, you don't have revenue. If you don't have industry, you don't have revenue. And everything everybody wants to do can't get done without that revenue. So elect people that you think can work with other people. I don't care what side of the aisle they're on, doesn't matter to me. They need to be able to work together because when you elect people that are diametrically opposed, which is what you did, what our citizens did, at the beginning of our term, we were all filing on the same cylinders, all going the same way. And once Mr. McQuade's term was up, you elected somebody who had never been in government that didn't want development. Once Mayor Wendorf resigned, you elected somebody else that kind of opposed a lot of the stuff we've done. And you saw that with the shared services agreement. I battled and I fought with three of them to get that done. And I will do that. If I think that's what needs to be done for the best interest of our city, I will fight. But I'm fighting for the city, I'm not fighting for myself. Thank you.
Mr. Darella.
I do believe with all the questioning that's already occurred as we go through these, this particular topic was touched on, but one thing that I would add in addition to the other things that I've mentioned, is you've got to use your professional staff as well. You have to make sure that you're utilizing your administrator, your city solicitor, all the department heads, whether it be in engineering, planning, economic development, that they need to be involved in the process when you go through and try to work your way through any disagreement or any philosophical difference on the way you want to see the city of Millville. Facts are facts, and that's what you need to present when you're going through a discussion, okay? And trying to convince or at least sway someone to see it in the vision that you have. So again, that's one way that you really should be utilizing that, which means your professional staff have to be right on the spot. They have to make sure that they understand the expectations of the majority of the board. Or the mayor, or one commissioner that's got a specific project that they want done, okay, and needs to be done, how do they present that? How do they present those facts to them to make sure that happens? It is difficult with the sunshine law. All five of us cannot meet together unless it's a social gathering or a special event. But you can utilize the voices of the professional staff to communicate the thoughts to each one of those other commissioners that may have a different agreement in regards to the direction the city must go. Bottom line is though, you have to make sure you move the city forward. Yeah, I was fortunate. When I was in Millville, we had, you know, four people, other people, and then when we had a seat change when Mr. Hollings had passed away, that individual came in with different ideas, but we all made sure we stayed on the same path. And we utilized the professional staff to try to settle any disagreements or any points that we couldn't get across with facts. And that's critical. You can't argue with a fact, you have to make sure it's true and you've got to make sure you verify it. But again, that helps settle a lot of disagreements and help the city move forward. The same thing at the county level, which I said before, is extremely, extremely political. Again, budgets at the county level, my Republican partners would say, it's a great budget, but I have to vote no. Okay? I understand your point of view. They communicated to me, I understand. Not a good reason in my eyes to do that, but I respect that. You communicated. Again, that communication going back and forth, that's going to be critical. No matter who gets elected with 19 candidates, if they can't work together, they can't find common ground, the city goes nowhere. I'm going to speak for the two gentlemen that are here with us as well and all the other candidates. I truly believe we all want the best for the city of Millville. And that's all myself and Carmen and we want. We just want to make where we live a little bit better. And that's what it boils down to.
Mr. McGinty.
Fortunately, anybody running for city commission has to live in the city. I can't imagine anybody who would want to come on a city commission and not want to see the city succeed. So we all have that in common. Some of us are willing to go a little bit farther and work harder than others, but I think everybody has Millville's best interest in mind. Again, Joe and Joe have more experience than I do. You know, they've lived and had to abide by things that by law you have to do with the city. They've been coached, educated, or smacked on the hand by our professional staff. Maybe the attorneys told them something, no, you can't do that, or whatever. I haven't had the benefit of that, so, you know, I'm a loose cannon right now. I'd do whatever I want. I don't have to answer to anybody. But I think that I can work within the confines of, you know, whatever we need to do to make this city better. I'll be happy to learn everything I need to know to be an effective commissioner. And you have to cooperate. There's no two ways about it. Without that cooperation, without that goal, without that idea in mind, this is what we want to do, this is what we need to do, we won't be able to succeed. We have to have people, and I see this in my last year and a half or so of being involved with the planning board and having a little better inside look at how our city operates and how things go. You have to have people that are accountable. Okay? Everybody has best interests, but you've got to be accountable. You have to be a realist. You can be a little bit of an optimist, but you can't have pioneer sky ideas. You have to be able to make what you have work. And working with upper levels of government, working with our professional staff. Our professional staff is great for the most part. We have great engineers that are happy and all seem to get along, which we haven't always had in the past. We have, you know, people in charge of different departments. Joe Calchi is, you know, a pleasure to talk to. He'll answer anything you want. We've had other people who I won't mention that helped with our economic development on a part-time basis. Phenomenal. The guy has more background in getting things done with economic development. It's amazing. And he's, he's helped our city get a lot of things, made it happen. So, you know, I'm looking forward to working with other people. And as long as everybody has the same goal in mind, and it's, which is to help our city, I'm on board. Thank you.
So this might be one of our last questions. I know people are, have other plans and other things they need to do today, but we'll see how it goes. Millville residents are feeling the strain of rising taxes and many points passed decisions at the county level that contributed to those increases. If elected to serve Millville, how will you approach budgeting and tax policy in a way that protects residents' pockets while still ensuring the city has the resources it needs? Mr. McGinty, would you like to go first?
Well, once again, and I hate to, you know, keep bringing it up, unless you have the money to do things, you're going to have a hard road to go. Economic development is huge. Tourism could help. You know, bring in other business to the city. Having innovative ideas of how to, you know, draw people to come here and spend money. The motorsports park has been much of a bigger success with that. I mean, cars are coming in and out all the time. They're buying gas, they're buying parts, they're buying this, they're buying that. Those people have money to spend. They're coming here to do it. It's a great thing. You know, people come for the arts, people come for our brewery. We're going to have a new restaurant open. We have some great restaurants in El Guacamole, you know, in the past Winfields. There were success stories. We need more of those, a lot more of them. You know, having the bucks to do nice things is key. And to get a industry in here that will not only bring jobs, it will bring people that need housing, that will be, you know, maybe fixing up a place that's already here, maybe they'll build something new. You know, it's all money coming into our economy. To have people who come on board and create jobs and create businesses through ancillary equipment that are needed for freezers and for maintenance of old manner of other business that comes in that may not be the main business, but they take care of, you know, a number of businesses by services or by products that they distribute, bring, or whatever. You know, all those things are synergistic to help make our community function and thrive. Thank you.
Mr. Darella.
Government is an interesting animal. People say, you know, get it running like a business. Well, if you run government like a business and you have an increase in your costs, what do you do? You raise the price of your product. That's how a business would work. And unfortunately, the way municipality or a state or federal government has to do is they have to raise taxes. It's one of those things, it's an evil word, but to survive and move forward, you've got to get some kind of balance on what you're trying to do when you move forward. It's a huge challenge. You try to build ratables, bring new businesses in town, try to work your way through to get that taken care of. What other opportunities are there out there for other alternative revenues? There are very few. You can go after grant monies, generally needs a match, and you have to go after it in that direction. You also need to, you know, consider other things. I know dispensaries did not come up here in regards to marijuana. Whether you're in favor of it or not, it's not my choice, that kind of, you know, recreational use. But where are we at? I know the city has now struck a deal or at least gave a letter of intent, recommendation for someone to do that. I know the city of Vineland, I was speaking to Mayor Fanucci, they raised $800,000 of revenue from their one dispensary and one grow. So there are opportunities for revenues to offset taxes. It's a big challenge. Right now, again, you look at where we are at in the city of Millville, the current commission is doing the best they can to try to control taxes. They've utilized a lot of opportunity with what I'm going to call one-hit wonders. They've been successful in selling some city properties, which helped offset some of the potential raises that were going to be in taxes. You've used $5 million in surplus in 2024 to try to close that gap, surplus is there for. You used $7 million of surplus in 2025 to make sure the budget was solid. But again, there was still a 3.7 tax increase that went along with that. Surplus is good, you want to maintain that. The city has an excellent bond rating, double A, outstanding. They're under 1% of their debt service, excellent. But how do we plan for the future and how do we set those goals that we need moving forward? We've got a huge health increase coming. I'm hoping, from what I heard earlier, the city's looking to try to maybe find another provider for healthcare. 51% is the average of state health benefits going across the state of New Jersey. We saw that coming 18, 20 months ago. Maybe we could have been a little bit more progressive. I know they're working on it now and there could be some good positive alternatives to lower that hit on our budget. Another issue we're going to have to deal with in the city of Millville, not just here, the entire county, is assessed value. Right now, the city of Millville is at 56%. That's nothing the commission did wrong, that's just the way the market has impacted the value of our homes. And it's across the board, across the entire county. Everyone's down significantly. That's going to be a challenge. Will the state dictate to us that we have to do a revaluation? It's a challenge. Been through that, 2003, 2004, 2005. Huge process, several million dollars to get that taken care of. What happens? Third property values go up, third go down, third stay the same. The biggest properties are impacted when you do something like that are the commercial properties because they're usually of the most value. So there's a lot of things that are coming into when you make a decision on whether you're going to raise taxes or not. Look, I pay taxes, just like the other candidates pay taxes. I don't want to see it go up, but when you sit on the dais, there's going to be hard decisions you have to make. And when you're in leadership role, whether it's in government, whether it's as a volunteer or you're running a nonprofit, or you're, you know, working for a big corporation, there are decisions you have to make. And you've got to come under fire because you're going to upset some people. So again, taxes, they're difficult. And it's all going to be predicated on what we can do with economic development, what we can do to try to suck some more money out of the state, what can we do to save some money over here? It's going to be a huge challenge as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Sui.
Sure. First, I'll talk about that budget and the surplus. I have up here the figures for 2019 through 2024. And what you'll do is see if you dig into that a little bit. Every year, you use your surplus in your budget, and then there's a replenishment amount. And I have those figures available. So right now, it looks like $7 million is being used for 2025. But you don't have the total revenues till the end of the year. And then that will get plugged back in and it'll get replenished for whatever reason the budget to replenish it. So it's a little meeting, a little misleading to say that not everyone, candidate said we had a $7 million deficit. You don't, you can't operate on a deficit. I think, Mr.?
Yeah, I didn't say deficit.
No, you didn't. Another candidate, another candidate did. But you're right, we have, exactly. No argument out of you. So the key is economic development, of course, and I outlined those projects earlier that we're doing. Also, the proper use of UEZ funds, which we have more now, we keep reinvesting. In fact, what we did, we had the opportunity to make the UEZ zone larger. And that is what we did. We made the UEZ zone larger. The entire lake, the water park, was in the UEZ zone. We stretched that out to make it further down 49, further down Buckstunum Road. So we did that. That will also help us increase revenue. Mr. Drell mentioned cannabis. We already have one grow up and running and we approved a retail facility which is going to the old BB&amp;T bank. That is expected to be up and running in March. Again, I was not in favor of legalizing marijuana, but if I can go to Vineland and buy it, there's no reason not to sell it in Millville. Right? So we'll get that revenue. The last figures, I think, for the grow facility, if I remember correctly, was something like $45,000 for the quarter, and they just started recently.
It was 38.
38, okay. So, okay. So, right. So, there you go. So again, it's all about economic development. It's all about, you know, you can raise taxes or you can bring in more ratables. Everybody would rather bring in more ratables. Nobody wants to see these health benefits go crazy like they're going, but they are. I mean, it's unfortunate. We're giving employees raises and they have to contribute to their health benefits, and then when they're all done, they didn't. then when they're all done, they didn't, they brought home no more money. And that's why we're working so hard. We were getting quotes from two companies to see if we can eliminate some of that burden, not only for them, but for the taxpayer, because we also pay a portion. You talk about working with the professional staff. One thing we have to do is hold the professional staff accountable. They don't always do what you want. I mean, I have pictures of a guy, of one of our department heads sleeping at a desk. So you have to hold them, you know, they're getting paid money. I would love to pay them more so we could get much better people. Not that they're all bad, a lot of them are good. But when we hire some, I would like to attract better candidates. We're recently, we're bringing a couple people back that worked here that left for greener pastures. They found out it's not greener, okay? And the other thing is, when you're working with the professional staff, we are the policymakers. They are supposed to enact the policies that we create. Sometimes you have resistance there, for whatever reason. COVID is a big reason. A lot of people got lazy during COVID. It was very, a very arduous task to get some of those professional staff working again after they could work from home, the building was closed. So that was an arduous task. We have to hold them accountable to make sure that your money is spent wisely. And that's, I don't know what else to tell you other than that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I heard from Mr. Dorella that he has to cut out at about 12:30. I appreciate you coming and answering as many questions as you could. Would you like to give a closing statement before you go, or you just want to go?
I was going to thank you out, too.
Sure.
Again, running for office is never easy. You never have all the answers. I remember the first time I ran for the school board, and my father, rest his wonderful soul, said, "What is wrong with you?" And that still sticks in the back of my brain, the same thing, city commission and, you know, at the county level. The one thing that sticks out is you want to do what's best for the people that you work with and that you represent. And that's always been the goal here. I've said it many times and I will continue. It's very simple. All we want to do is make Millville a little bit better. I have experience, okay? And again, I mentioned before, in a leadership role, people are not going to be happy with you. You have to make those decisions, and you have to make those decisions based on the facts at the time. Very rarely do you see myself reach back and try to criticize someone who made a decision that was in the seat prior to me, because I don't know what the facts were when he or she had to make that decision, because I've lived it. So again, the experience is what I want to share. Look, I'm 69 years old. Even my wife said, "You know what? You're retired now, you need to find something to do. Go run for office, because you're driving me nuts." Okay. It's a good use of my time, but I do want to share that experience. I've been part of teams and have been the lead on some of these teams. And I just jotted down a few things, because my son said, "Dad, you know, you did a lot of stuff in your 28 years. Call for Center, RRCA, Glass Town Plaza, River View Complex, Buck Park, Lee Boy Theater, Arts and Innovation, Union Lake Crossing, New Jersey Motorsports, Texas Roadhouse, Longhorn, Chili's, CC Tech School, the second addition to that school, Rowan College of South Jersey, Veterans Service Pavilion, 911 Communication Upgrade, which helped all of the cities, and hopefully that project continues to move forward since I've left office. The soccer complex, we had the Cumberland County Positive Youth Coalition, which was a state, we were the only county to do that as a full county. What that did was it attacked youth. And when I say attacked them, tried to give them alternatives, showed them the bad side of the continued down a path, but also showed interest in what you can do if you make wise decisions. That actually lowered juvenile crime by 40%. One of the candidates, Rick Cott, was very, very involved with that, and he was on the police department. He represented the city of Millville, did a tremendous job. Got to give kudos where kudos are due. You know, we had Third Fridays that were very successful, we had 90% occupancy on High Street. I mean, the list goes on and on. So what I want to do with Team Millville is try to share that experience, pass that on to whoever wants to be part of that commission and really help bring Millville back to what it was in the past. Thank you for your time, Steve. Thanks for putting this off. I wish more candidates could have been here, but again, everybody's got a busy schedule. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Dorella. There was a question from, Eric doesn't want to answer it or ask it now. Before we wrap up, does anybody else have any additional questions they'd like to ask?
I have one question just to go, excuse me, two seconds, just I want to ask this question to all the candidates. We have a great source of revenue for the city in the Water and Sewer Department. I know in the past, when you were at the county level, you were involved in trying to monetize the CCUA. Is that something you would do in Millville? Because that's a big bag of money that you guys.
It's a great question. So, question is that. It's funny, I was at the Historical Society last night, had all the buyers and the mayors, and there was a mayor, I think it was 1941, that was actually looking to monetize the Water Department at the time. There's some confusion about monetizing. What we did from the county board, okay, where I was the director, was we wanted them to look and see if there was the ability to branch off of that and have a broadband authority. That was the original intent. Fortunately, we put a couple board members on there, they kind of took it to a whole nother level in regards to what was going on. So again, the thought was broadband. Now, the city of Vineland is taking advantage of that right now. They've got their own utility, they're going to take over the broadband opportunity, which I'm glad to see is going to happen, which is going to give us alternatives other than just Comcast and Xfinity. But that was the original intent in regards to that. It blossomed into something completely different. And I would apologize now, because we did not handle that correctly, to bring them back to what was eventually said couldn't be done after we finally got attorneys to sit down and we checked other resources, you can't branch off and make a separate utility. So again, that was the thought, did not want to sell it. I'll tell you right now, 19, no, 2001, 2002, somebody came to town and wanted us to consider getting rid of both utilities. No. They are successful at what they do. They are, they generate revenue, they carry themselves with their own debt. I just looked at those debt numbers, they carry their own debt. No need to even consider that. I will give you another thing. Previously, with my work for NovaCare, one of their major accounts was American Water. And I had to travel up and down the state to do basically safety and occupational health and help people with injuries. And the problem there was, when I would go to those different things, I was still in office then. So I'm asking questions. I'm asking questions to the employees, and I'm lunchtime, I can go wherever I want. I'm asking residents. Mixed bag of responses. Ocean City is a great example. Ocean City has outsourced everything to American Water. They couldn't keep up with the cost. But again, Millville's different. You look at our ledger books, and even, even at the time when this company came in to ask us if we would consider it, they did say, you know, your sewer and your water, those two departments, they're pretty well-run. They've got a good positive ledger on both sides of the books, they carry their own debt, they contribute to the budget. I mean, I'm saying, well, why'd you ask us? So again, Facebook and all those things can get spun. Could we control that a little bit better and stay focused at the county level and said, "This is what we really want to do," instead of having things blossom into things that were really thoughts of some of the board members that we appointed there? But again, no. Again, I've looked at the budget, I got it downloaded in my phone, and the way they're operating right now today and the way, the foreseeable future, as long as we can maintain and keep the infrastructure in place the way we need, there should be no need to even consider that. We need to attack other opportunities for revenue, whether it's going to be with dispensaries, whether it's going to be economic development, you know, those kind of things, and how we can draw all the revenues outside of tax dollars. Hopefully I answered your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want, Mr. Sui would like to address that?
I absolutely would. The answer is absolutely not. Right now, the Sewer Department has a surplus of 6.7, 8, 9 million dollars. We're looking at doing further upgrades. Those upgrades are necessary for further economic development. So, right now, we're adding a clarifier that was done with bonds and with grants from New Jersey Infrastructure Trust Fund, very well-run. The Water Department is a little tighter, and the problem with the Water Department, and I don't want to privatize either one of them, is lead line replacement mandate from the state. It's going to cost millions of dollars. We're going to have to do it. But everywhere I look, they contracted this stuff out, I don't like it. And believe me, whoever gets elected is going to get approached again. You get approached every term about monetizing, call it what you will, privatizing, monetizing, it's a bad idea. I can't find a good place that it's happened. So absolutely not. They see a revenue monster. Otherwise, the private company's not going to do it. They're not doing it for our good, they're doing it for their good. That's their job. The answer to their stockholders, not to our residents.
I guess Mr. McGinty would also like to address that question.
Our sewer department does a great job. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Like you said, they got a surplus, $7 million. That's awesome. They got work to do, they have to have a surplus. You never know when something's going to break. So, you know, and if it's in the hands of somebody else, you're at the mercy of who they're going to hire, and they're going to not be paid city workers, they're going to be people coming in here at prevailing rate, and prevailing rate isn't cheap. The water. Being a geologist, I know a little bit about how things go with water around different places. I've had a friend who worked for New Jersey American Water Company. I've been to a couple of their former, they were changed a little bit now, I hear. I've been to their Christmas party, where the amount of money that they spent for their employees at a Christmas party was astonishing. It was in probably the biggest venue I've ever seen with, outside of maybe the casinos, with just picture room here, hors d'oeuvre room here. I'm talking more shrimp than Bubba Gump had on his boat when he had that, it was ridiculous, lobster tail. They had enormous ice sculptures, New Jersey American Water. I think I have some in my phone, pictures of it. You don't do that and run a tight budget like our city does. Yeah, we're going to face a challenge with replacing the lead lines and other things. The state comes up with these mandates, and, you know, we got to, we got to do what they say. Same way with our sewer plant, we had to upgrade the sewer plant. If we didn't, somewhere down the road, we're going to be behind the eight ball chasing, you know, our compliance with biological oxygen demand and dissolved solids and stuff going in the river. So to sell it, I would never do it. Galloway, there are people scream bloody murder about their water bill down there. Ocean City, not so much. You know, they might be a success story, but there's a heck of a lot more money in Ocean City than there is in Millville. You know, when they get a little bit of a heavier bill, you know, maybe they don't go out to eat one night, who knows? But I say no, and I'm with Sui on that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions before we start? Eric has got his inspiration back. Go for it.
Thanks, Steve. Oh, thank you for coming and sticking it out here, just as we wind down to bring it back to the downtown. As a small business owner, the past 15 years in Millville on High Street, I've seen it, you know, do better, and I've seen it do worse. I feel like the past few years, it's getting a little bit better. But from my perspective, all the urban blight and, you know, crime and drugs and loitering and homelessness and all that can be effectively cured by having buildings that are owned and operated. So, you know, Mary Ann maintains her property, Danielle maintains her property. So if there's illicit activity happening there, they're going to call the police, and the police are going to respond in a fantastically timely fashion. We talked about that event on Oak Street, you know, I was there. I didn't see crowds of thousands of people, there were maybe a couple dozen people concerned, but the, you know, someone saying, "Call the cops, call the cops," I picked up my phone, and there's a police officer already there. Response time was amazing. So I don't have anything bad to say about the police, but when we have vacant buildings, either foreclosed buildings that are bank-owned, or buildings that were bought by people with too much money and are just sitting on them, which, you know, a few years ago, the property values bottomed out. I mean, I almost bought the property diagonally across from me, they were asking like 15,000 for it. You know, it got snapped up, and now I don't know what's happening to it. The guy who bought it, it appears to just be sitting there again. But, you know, people from out of state or investment groups or whatever seem to have bought half the properties in the downtown, maybe the city at large, and I don't know what they're doing with them. They're not fixing them up, they're not renting them out, and they don't seem to be doing a good job at selling them to flip them. So what can we do to get the vacant, eyesore buildings that foster crime and, you know, people could squat in them, they get vandalized? You know, if we can fix that, I think all the other riffraff will fall into line. So, remaining candidates, what are we going to do about that? How can we fix the downtown?
Why didn't you run?
Sorry, I stalled your, stalled your.
So, one thing we did in the beginning of this term, back in whatever it was, 21, whatever. So what we started doing again was something that we did when we were in office before. We started doing demolition hearings. So these vacant, destroyed buildings, we would have a hearing, and they'd have so much time to fix it. Or we would take it and we would demolish it, and we would lean it, effectively giving the city control of the lot or the building. As I spoke about the change of government before, when we had an election, two elections, that process got sidelined. I tried as I might, I couldn't talk the other folks into doing it. So hopefully, when you get five new people or some old ones and some new ones, we can bring that back. You know, we offered incentives to help fix them. I mean, we have, you know, we have a building owner down here that painted the building next door to him, just because he cares, right? And that's the kind of stuff we need. But what we have, you know, again, we have a population here that doesn't mind breaking into a building, that doesn't mind destroying your property, doesn't mind throwing trash on the street. And until we get them out through economic development, we're going to have this problem. And it's, and I wish I had a solution to get them out faster. Now, I will tell you this, for the homeless problem, which includes the drug users and the mentally ill, and then there's people that are just in a financial mess, which those you can usually help, right? The drug users, they're not going to get help till they want help, but one thing we are going to do is we have a lot of money in our opioid fund. So I spoke with one of the directors of the Hope Center, and it happened that a vendor called and said, "Look, we can provide transportation for treatment for the people that want it." So there is a way to do that to perhaps help these people, but I'm going to tell you, I've read books, I have heard Mr. Cott speak about how he's been working with the homeless for 20 years, and he's helped some, but they got to go, right? If you can't help them, they have to go. And if that means we have to get them to move every day, so be it. We've been going to the parks, we see them in the park, I call the Parks Department, we go over there, "Look, tomorrow you got to be out of here." And if they're not going, we take their stuff, take what you can carry, and the rest is going to go. And we have to keep doing that. And that may sound cruel, but it's a lot crueler to the rest of the citizens that live in this city to have to put up with needles in the park, to have to put up with tents wherever. You know, it's just, it's unfortunate. And Ms. Keers, for all the disagreement I have with her, wants a former committee. I'm all for that. If there's a way to find it, we'll form a committee. But in the meantime, and I don't see a solution. The only solution that worked was Miami. They stuck them on a bus and shipped them out. Now, I don't want to be that cruel, I really don't. I empathize with people that are in a bad situation. We all know people that are addicts, we can feel bad for them, but we can't have them screwing up the rest of society. And hopefully, again, we can get our state legislatures, legislature and governors to open up the mental institutions again, and to put, open up jails. A county jail would be nice, but you guys can research what happened to that. So that would be nice, if we had a place to put them, right? And that's just the way it is. I mean, I can give you an example of a drug program that worked great in the state prison system, it's called the Peer Program. So to get in that program, you had to want to go into that program. And that knocked the recidivism rate down by 97% for the people that wanted to go. The state, in its infinite wisdom, then decided, "We're going to make everybody with a drug offense go to it." Well, they destroyed it, because you know what? If I still want to use drugs, I'm going to get them. Now I got them around the people that wanted to stop. So, you know, you can only help people that want to be helped. They don't want to be helped, they have to go. That's it.
Do I just clarify, my question was really about the, you know, vacant properties, the people who don't own them, not the.
Well, that, that goes to the, you know, to the demolition hearings again, and also, once we start getting the jobs here, and I know it takes time and nobody's paying, once we start getting the jobs here, the demand for that space will go up. Yeah, Mary Ann? Yeah, Mary Ann?
I'll go back 20 years. In 2002, when I, when I came here, and I'm not going to get this all straight. I'd have to look it up. But getting pioneer artists here was to get these buildings. Now, my building was in very bad shape, that we had to renovate it. But UEZ money went from first to second generation. I was offered not a grant, it was a loan, a mortgage on that building at a low interest. I didn't, I had an offer. I wanted to buy the building that Danielle's in. And I met with people in the city. I believe it was, I can't remember it all, Economic Development for the Art District, ASIA, be a pioneer artist. And they said, "We'll give you this much money." I can't remember numbers, so this is made up. "We'll give you 40,000 at 3%, 4%. Go to your bank and get a mortgage to buy the building, and we will put it in writing, guarantee the city will take second, UEZ, it will take second position." So, I went to, now it's Wells Fargo, whatever it was about 20 years ago, and they said, "We get first position, and you only want 40,000? Yeah, because I'm getting 40,000 here," the numbers. But that's, and they had it in writing. That's how the pioneer artists were willing to come in. We could get a building and have, buy the building for whatever it was. I don't remember, but we had the money to fix it up. So, we went in, and that building was in extremely bad shape. And then I was in it 19 years. Nine of those 19 years, I lived upstairs on High Street, out the window, saw it all, heard it all, been there, done. And then Diane, I says, "I really want to sell to another artist." And we did. But why can't something like this? The first generation UEZ money replaced itself. I paid back that loan, and that becomes your second gener, it just keeps rolling.
As, as I said, we, we've got the UEZ program back, and we do have higher loans available. You know, up to, and we only have so far one person that used it. And maybe we're not doing a good enough job getting information out. I mean, I've said it at a million meeting, a million times, but unfortunately, when I look at the meetings, it's like 125 people watching it. So, that, there is a loan program available for those businesses in the UEZ zone. We put a million dollars into it last year.
I didn't know that.
And you didn't know, right? And you kind of pay attention.
I mean, I don't, I'm not looking for.
You're not looking, but.
But if somebody knew, I can get UEZ money and come in and grab a boarded up building.
Bill, put that on your list to kind of market that loan program. Can we do that?
While you're resting.
While you're resting, yeah. While you, because you don't have anything else to do, I know. So, you know, I'll, I'll make a better effort to even, you know, in the next couple of months to get that information out.
The building I bought was, it was vacant, and part of it was boarded up and part.
So, we had, we had that, we had that opportunity again, right? We lost it for a while. We had it again. But I'm going to tell you, when I tried to get these guys to use second generation funds, "Oh, my God, if you use them, then they'll, they'll be gone." I'm like, "Look."
It replenished itself.
You're speaking to the car. So, you know, you wonder why I argue with people? So, yeah, that, that, and that was a good question. Sorry, I got sidetracked there.
Did you want to address it, Steve?
Well, I get questions posed to me, and when I don't know the answer, I try to find out. Joe's an excellent source of information. He's lived through it, had to do it. He's a math guy. He figures stuff out. He knows how the loans work, grants work. Very good at what he does. He's a mathematician, okay? You know, I, I feel for the people that have, you know, businesses and so forth that have to deal with everything that's going out there on the street. One of the things I looked into, vacant buildings and so forth. Marsh River Township, for vacant properties, they're having a vacancy tax program. If you have a property that's vacant, that's not up for sale, nothing's going on with it, when they have issues with it, they hit them with a tax. And I'm getting information on that from someone in Marsh River Township about how that works. It's being done throughout the country. You can go after buildings with our inspections and so forth and so on. If you don't have a way to hold those people's feet to the flame, to make them come to court and make them pay the fines, what do we do? We put a lien on the building that sits there for years and years and years until the building's sold and then nothing happens. When you start telling people, "They got to come up with some extra money per month," maybe that building, it doesn't look so lucrative to them, sitting there doing nothing. And I think it would be, if it can happen, and I would have to talk to our professional staff and so forth and so on, and the brain trusts that deal with our taxes and money and legalities. But if it can happen, it's happening in other states. I can tell you that for sure. Oregon, for one, look at the problems they're having. Washington State for another. I've called out there and talked to people in their departments. I've been doing that a lot lately because I don't have the answers, and they have the same problems we do, especially in Oregon. When I was out there visiting, I had to step over people and deal with more than what we have here. Oregon's off the hook because they kind of were like hippie community from the '70s, and they just kept getting worse and worse, and here we have it. But that's, that could be an opportunity to get these places like you're talking up and moving again, you know? A lot of these places owned by people from New York, Toms River, Philadelphia, you know, and, and they don't come here, down here and look at it. They come, collect their rent, whatever, and they roll out. And they could care less because what's, what's the property really worth? It's not the house they want, it's the property. When things turn around, or when we have a boon in the economy as far as housing goes, or when we just have places that, you know, are running out of space, and they want to do a new business somewhere, you know, where are they going to go? They're going to come to places like this where they bought it for nothing, and now they want a lot of money for it. Look at the rents, how they burgeoning, you know? Taxes, this, that went up, this hap, you know, they got to maintain things, you know? So, what do they do? They pass that on to the consumer. Well, if we have more opportunity for rentals, we have more places that have money coming in for programs where our citizens can fix things up and our citizens can make things work. We won't have to deal with these absentee landlords. I think it's real important to figure, one way or another, something that works to take care of that. A lot of these vacant places are just an opportunity for people to go in and steal whatever they want, wire, pipe, this, that, the other, you know? And downtown isn't the only place it happens. Out by me, they came in and they tore out, a couple of years ago now, they tore the wiring out of the wall, just regular, you know, household wire. It's more work to strip that and do that than go to work at McDonald's and, and have a regular job. You know, you're going to get pennies for that. To have it replaced, to fix the wall, to do this, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars by the time they destroy a home. You know, we can't have that continue to happen. And, you know, I didn't come on board to campaign and run to, you know, act as one of the people that are in the know about, you know, the police and fire department or the economics of how the city runs. I don't want to run the sewer department, you know, or be in charge of it. They do a great job, and I think that would be an easy department to work with because, you know, those people are in place, the professionals do a good job. You just kind of look for improvements and try to help those guys out as much as you can, and, you know, you do whatever. But like, you know, the, this, we need not only the things that I'm saying, but we need to tap into the safety and the, the health end of getting the drug problem straightened out and whatever. It's, it's, and I, you know, we have law and public safety. I think we should have health thrown in there. Because there, in our situation, all of the problem is interrelated to health. It's interrelated to problems with people, and it's interrelated to the safety of all of us. Thank you.
Well, there was a couple more questions from the Oar House. So, just to be thorough. The parking lot of the Oar House is a sinkhole. It's city property, and the city started to rework the sidewalk, but then stopped. The quote unquote "lake Oar" sinkhole takes up three to four parking spaces. Is there any plan to get this city parking lot fixed? As it's one of the only parking lots for the High Street district.
Yes, the answer is yes. We're going to be patching it soon. I don't know when. Soon, I talked to my department about that, the other way that parking lot is city property. And then we have UEZ funds dedicated to redoing the whole thing. So, we're going to put a temporary fix in it, we'll patch it, so to speak. And then we're going to fix the whole thing. As we are the other parking lots in town, as well as Pay Buck Street. High Street's already slated for, for being redone by state grant. So, with pedestrian improvements, lighting improvements and all that. So, yes.
Cool. Do you want to? Mr. McGinty?
Well, what he said. Yeah, but, but reality, you know, you want to come on because he wants to record it. The, it's great that the city's addressing that situation. Yeah, there's some things out there. I just want to point out, the Oar House isn't the only game in town, and there's other places that, that need these kind of things done and improvements and so forth and so on. Thankfully, or not thankfully, you know, the area behind the Bank on Sassafras, there's a hole in there that if I stepped out of my Jeep, I would probably strip my gears because it's so deep that, you know, my legs aren't long enough to not have me do a split. That would not be pretty, trust me. Similarly, you know, the, the city property that's adjacent to Jim's Lunch, same thing. It's, it's, you know, you drive, and, and, you know, I've been complaining about High Street. I drive my Jeep up there. That's supposed to be an off-road vehicle. It feels like an off-road vehicle going up High Street. Things had to be taken care of on a lot of these streets. You know, underneath, pipes had to be fixed, so forth and so on, before we could come in and take care of those, those issues. So, I, I don't think it's a matter of the city or streets and roads ignoring it. I think it's a matter of, a lot of things had to happen first. Fulton Street, I know, and now Ireland Avenue and so forth. They put a new pump station in. That was a lot of work and a lot of expense. And, you know, sometimes, timing doesn't work out for everybody. So, you know, it's, it's good to hear things are getting, you know, are, are on the slate to get done, and hopefully, we can look on to, you know, other, other improvements and so forth. Thank you.
And I guess it's time to button everything up? Has everybody had enough for today? Cool. So, do you guys want to give closing statements before we finish?
I think this commission, in spite of its differences, you've heard many of the projects that are ongoing. And in spite of the, as I may say, fighting up there and fighting whatever, a lot of things are still getting done. They would have been done faster had everybody agreed. Sometimes, you know, and I think if it wasn't for my personality, having the ability to sometimes twist arms, that a lot of this stuff wouldn't be getting done. So, I'm probably not the, I'm certainly not the prettiest person. I'm certainly not the youngest person. I'm probably not the nicest person. But I have a record of being able to accomplish things. I have two guys running with me. Unfortunately, Mr. Gregwire was with his daughter today, so he couldn't make it. Mr. McGinty and Mr. Gregwire and I have been working together. So, sometimes we all, you know, maybe a little eccentric. Let me put it that way, no insult, but, you know. But what I'm saying is, try to elect people that are going to work together. During the course of this campaign, and in fact, the last time I ran, there were 13 individuals that I asked to run with me. I thought every one of those 13 was better than me. The answer from all 13 was, "You're crazy. Why do I want to put myself through that ridicule? Why do I want to put myself through that criticism on social media? Why do I want to do that? It's not worth it." Well, monetarily, it's not worth it, but trying to fix the city, I think it's worth it. I lived here my whole life. I want it better. I don't want it worse. So, all the stuff that I do, good, bad, nice, mean, holding employees accountable, is to make this city better. Try to elect people, and if you want to go with the other side, that's fine. If you're going to elect them, elect people that think like them, right? If you're going to elect me, then elect people that you think, think like me. Don't put us in a situation where it's three to two, four to one, whatever. Try to do the best you can to elect like-minded people. I think I can work with anybody as long as they have the best city, best interests of the city at heart, and it's not a personal vendetta. It may appear that way when you're up there because, you know, in front of the scenes, somebody's telling you one thing. Behind the scenes, you're getting emails, "I'm the guy that took you down." I don't need that from another commissioner. And I certainly don't need the bashing on Facebook. None, none of us do, right? I mean, some of the sites, it's just horrendous. It's crazy. It's absolute insanity. And that's why more good people don't want to run. You have a candidate, you have a field of 19 candidates. You have a lot of candidates, a wide field, but start looking at the depth. Start looking at their records, what they've done, how they are, and who you think they can work with. Thank you.
Mr. McGinty?
Well, you heard what other people have said when they got up here, and they, you know, they banged their drum about all the things they did and so forth and so on, and, you know, what a team player they are and those kind of things. Joe is right. It's not an easy job to come into this, and, you know, people come out of the woodwork to take you to task. I'll just say that, you know, I grew up here. Probably my earliest thing where I worked with people was in my scout troop. I was a leader. I was an Eagle Scout. I was a good example for kids that were younger than me when I got to be older, okay? Got to high school, played on the football team, and it was, we were state champs in 1975. It's coming up on a 50th anniversary. We were undefeated. I was part of that team, okay? We had success. When I finally went to school, got out, got hired, I worked for the DEP. People say they were in charge of this, in charge of that, and the other. I don't say much about it. People often don't trust the DEP. But, and as part of my job, I cleaned up 1,500 acres in South Millville on pretty much my own. I saw it. I see all it needed to be addressed. I wrote notices of violation. I oversaw the cleanup. Ultimately. cleanup, ultimately drove the company that owned it pretty much out of town. Sadly, it went around and around and it became part of Fish and Game Land because of, you know, it was wanted by the Wild and Scenic River folks as part of the watershed and so forth. I'm not overly mad at that, but that, this big chunk of property that was taken away from Millville that may have been able to provide some ratables relief and so forth and still be green-operated, that's ancient history now. When I worked for the DEP, I did billions in cleanup. I didn't do it myself, I oversaw the companies that did it, I reviewed their plans, their sampling procedures, their remedial investigation feasibility studies and their remedy plans. I was a case manager on many, many, many sites, until I ultimately became the person that was overseeing deed-restricted property. We have properties that are gonna go that route here in the city of Millville that take up a lot of space. They could be redeveloped economically and that's what I'm looking to do, that's why I signed up for this. I can work with anybody. I look forward to working with other people and I hope that, like, like Joe said, you, you look at the reality of what people are trying to say they're going to do and decide for yourselves as voters, is it possible for them to do what they're gonna do? There's some pie in the sky ideas out there that'll never happen, I can guarantee you that. You have to look at things within reason and somebody told me, "We have an elephant in the middle of High Street and one way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time." We gotta start with small things and fix things and go, and those things will help make other things get fixed. And ultimately, you know, maybe we'll look at, you know, the four corners of each block and say, "Let's work here on this vacant building and that bit, building that needs help, oh, those guys are doing great, but we'll do something next door, try to get them a neighbor who has a business." And then come across the street, "Well, these guys are working, but they're struggling. Maybe there's something we can do for them that will improve their situation or that will make their business more optically pleasing." So people will come and enjoy it more or frequent it more. Those are the kind of things we gotta do and those are the kind of things we gotta look at. And we need people that will put their heads together and get it done and be innovative and hold other people accountable for things that are detrimental to the city. Thank you.
All right, everybody watching at home and here, thank you very much for coming and listening. Hopefully, we can do this more in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.